Planning Commission meeting. I am Commissioner Sokowski. Commissioner Law, or...
Wallace.
Pat is out tonight, so I'm sitting for his place. We have five items listed on the agenda for this evening. One consent item on the calendar and four public hearings. Our first consent item is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting on January 17th.
I move to approve the minutes as contained in the packet.
Right. Motion from Commissioner Quinney, second from Commissioner Green. Any discussion to that motion? Alright, vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so, first item on the consent count, or on the, sorry. First item for public hearing is the KGB Maintenance Shop Fuel Tanks Conditional Use Permit. We have the applicant listed as Dymont Management LLC is the applicant present. The time is now yours. You have 10 minutes to address the case.
Yeah, hi guys. My name is Court. It's endemic. We moved into the shop, built it this last fall on the corner of Wells Park and Fulmer. We've got less than 20 employees, about eight of them use it on a daily basis. And all we're proposing to do is have two 2,000 gallon above ground fuel tanks. It'll be enclosed in a concrete structure, excuse me, protected with ballards. It'll, the capacity, if there was a spill, is 160%. It's, we would be doing all of our fueling on asphalt. It's behind an eight foot tall concrete fence, so it's completely shielded from the road in any direction. And whatever questions you have, I more than happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Did you say 160% on the containment?
Yeah.
When you say 160%, are you talking about both tanks or just one?
Both tanks. We're proposing 4,000 gallon, I think it'll, our containment 16 by 18 by three feet. Now it's store up to 6400 gallons.
I'm ready. How tall are the tanks?
Six foot. Yeah, they'll be in a three foot enclosure, so they'll also be recessed into the ground probably about a foot. So, only be added to the ground about five feet.
This containment, the enclosure, is it just concrete or does it have some sort of waterproofing or chemical membrane that keeps it moist?
It's concrete, but it'll be sealed, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, is it going to be double walls or just single walls?
Single vault tanks, but it's got a backup with the concrete containment. And we'll be using the tanks only for our use. It's got nothing to do with the public. They'll be locked up during the day and night. We fuel four trucks per day out of there and then four pickups take fuel out to job sites. That's why there's two tanks for two different types of diesel.
Alright. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll save you some time for the other public comment. This is Ms. Lawson's.
Yeah, so KGB Maintenance Shop was the preliminary site plan was approved late last year with the four conditions of preliminary site plan. The applicant was able to meet all four conditions really easily for their preliminary, or their final site plan, and they've been good to work with in the past. Staff has found that the proposed fuel tanks, the conditional use for the fuel tanks, because they're located in the drinking water source protection overlay district, a conditional use is required. Staff has found that the proposal meets all seven criteria listed in the city court, and staff is recommending that planning commission approve the conditional use with the seven conditions listed in the staff report.
Any questions for staff? Thank you. This is listed as a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this issue, we ask that you state your name and address so that we can have it as part of the public record. And we will now open that public hearing. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I'm gonna, sorry, Commissioner. I'm gonna make a mo- I can't see this being very controversial since it's a conditional use permit, so I'm gonna make a motion based on the finding, positive findings set forth in the staff report. I, I move, let's see, oh, the wording's wrong here, so I'm gonna make it, based on the findings set forth tonight and the information we received tonight, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for KGB construction without fuel storage located at 5816 West Wells Park Road in an M-zone with the conditions of approval one through seven as listed in the staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Green. Hang on a second.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? The motion is approved, seven to one, or I'm sorry, six to zero. Alright, our second agenda item and for public discussion is the West Jordan Recreation and Aquatic Center. This is a conditional use permit and is put forth by Jim Wright, or represented by Jim Wright of the West Jordan City. Is the applicant present?
Thank you. We have the architect here to make a presentation this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Brent Tiffetz, V-CBO Architecture. I'm here and I'm joined with John Wadurda, who's also former V-CBO Architecture. Let me just check and make sure. Perfect. Okay. So the project you may or may not be familiar with, but is located in the Ronwood Park area. It's location, it's right off of the Mountain View Corridor. It sits currently in a vacant field that is immediately to the east of the parking lot where the splash pad is located. So if I can just orient you here, this is the splash pad, the parking lot. The area that we're going to be talking about is what's shown here in yellow is where the recreation center is proposed to be used. There's a substantial parking lot that goes along with it that will also serve for what the city is also moving forward with is a relocation of the current detention basin that sits right here. And that detention basin will also become playfield, so the parking lot is actually designed to service both features as development continues to take place in this area. There's also plans underway for a flyover the Mountain View Corridor on 8600 South that will be transpiring and taking place as well. So hopefully that will be oriented to the side a little bit. This is the site plan. Again, you can see 8600 South with the turnabout that is currently at that location. This represents the flyover that will go to the east over the Mountain View Corridor. This is the Ronwood Park Road here that comes existing. And the vacant lot down here is city shops that occur off on this corner, so if you're familiar with the area, that might orient you to kind of the scale of the site between the shops and 8600 South. The building follows a radial shape facing towards the turnabout area here. The parking lot then is located on the southeast end of the parcel, and this is where the detention bases will be. As that builds out, not part of this project, but as that builds out, there'll be a trail system and other things that'll take place here as well. You can see, we represent the building, talk about it a little bit more. We are showing an outdoor pool area, an outdoor pool deck area. That is an alternate item, and it may, hopefully it will be in, but we can't commit to that as actually being built this time. Over on, and so this is the aquatic end of the facility. This end has an indoor filled house. There'll be outdoor grass areas so that people that are participating in that will have an outdoor space to queue up and be outdoors in preparation for moving indoors and utilizing that at times. We won't spend much time on the floor plan since that's not really what we're here to talk about, but just so you know, some of the features that are in there. Again, I mentioned that filled house feature. This is the filled house. This is an indoor gym and a racquetball courts. And then again, on this southwestern end, that is actually where the aquatics, indoor aquatics would be located. The main entrance to the facility comes in along this axis here. And there is an upper level that there's additional spaces, that there's a fitness space, some exercise studios, spectator seating for the competition aquatic areas. And then there is an indoor walking jogging track. It will take a figure eight configuration and allow for movement throughout the facility that way on the upper level. The exterior of the building, this represents, I'll explain kind of the context of why it has the forms that it has here in just a moment, but the exterior materials are primarily a copper colored metal panel and a split face masonry block along with the glass that you see here. Just the four different elevations, I'll show you some different perspective views here that will maybe even orient you a little bit more. But this gets in kind of the context of how we develop the forms of the building. Recreation centers, particularly this one, it is a very large facility, 140,000 square feet, tend to be very dominant structures. We wanted to break that up and make it feel like it fit within the surrounding areas. We were very inspired by the surrounding hillsides, the copper mine, and even some of the formations within the mine itself. It's kind of inspired the architecture for this building as we've chosen to move forward. So also, this represents the materials and it probably doesn't come through very well, but it would be a copper colored material. It's not actually copper, but it will look copper. It will not patina and it will not turn green. It will always be a copper color. Then the masonry will be kind of an exposed aggregate, very neutral in colors. And then the glass will have a blue tint to it, again, trying to reflect the sky as it relates to the mountains that you see in the other colors that we're using, the materials we're using on the building. I wanted to include this because I know you're interested in landscaping, and we do have, I pointed out around the indoor filled house that we have some natural grass areas or some traditional turf areas, but the majority of the building as it's surrounded, we envisioned using natural grasses that will make it again, very indigenous, very organic, and not be a harsh transition into this building as it moves through. And here, we'll just, we'll thumb through a few perspective views of the facility, and you can see that again, we're trying to represent, using more of that natural grass that will grow a little bit taller combined with it, and trying to keep formations fairly simple, but very organic. We didn't want just a flat roof building, we didn't want just a pitched roof building. We wanted something that would kind of break it up into smaller elements, and so you can see here, if you come around, there'll be a drop off lane in front of the building for users to drop off youth and others in front of it at the front door. There are primarily two entrances in the building. This view actually represents it. This is the main entrance where users will come into the facility. This is a secondary entrance that's down, again, off the side of that filled house and the gymnasium area, so that if there's a large event, a junior jazz game or something, this can actually be used and can be shut off from the rest of the facility, so spectators, parents can come in and watch their kids play without violating the pay zone area and allowing them to have access into it as we go through that way. So, that's the main front door area. And again, the materials you see is the split face masonry, the metal panel. And we did, from the Mountain View Corridor, we did want to try to establish some type of a strong presence of the facility to identify for what it is. We are anticipating having some signage on it. This isn't necessarily the exact signage, but something that would identify the facility and be very recognizable as you're traveling along the Mountain View Corridor. So, those are primarily kind of the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Alright. Any questions for the applicant? Alright, seeing none. We invite you back after the public comment if there's any questions. And this one was also Ms. Lawson's.
Yeah, so the applicant did a good job of going over everything on the site plan. I'll just cover a couple of things on the subdivision. The subdivision, presently right now, the properties aren't located in a subdivision. The proposed major preliminary subdivision will be 54 acres in area with property dedication, which will be the Ronwood Parkway. And it will be a three lot subdivision. The preliminary site plan will include 21 acres of area and will be included in all of Lot Two in the major subdivision. Also under review tonight is the two conditional uses. The first being for the use itself, which is indoor and outdoor recreation and entertainment in the public facility zoning district. And the second is for the height of the building in the public facility zoning district. The maximum height without a conditional use is 30 feet. The proposed structure will be 48 feet at its highest point. With staff's review, we found that the proposal meets all of the criteria for the preliminary site plan, the preliminary major subdivision, and the two conditional uses. And staff is recommending that planning commission approve all three items with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Again, this is listed as a public hearing, so if there are any present who would like to speak on this item, the time is now yours. Who's come forward with a microphone, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I'm wondering if Jim could answer a couple of questions while I'm...
I will do my best.
Thank you. The outdoor pool is not a certain...
When we started looking at all the numbers and putting all the numbers together, it might exceed the budget. We don't know for sure until it actually bids, and we have the firm numbers, so we're gonna hand this on the drawings as an add alternate. So if, if the numbers come in so that it stays within the budget, it would certainly get built. But it just, it just has to be, it's one of those things that would only be used three months out of the year as opposed to the entire building which would be used year round. So, it was an option we took to make it an add alternate in the event that the numbers come in higher than we think they probably should.
The other question I had was, and I realize, you know, this is, you know, not scale, but it looked, if we did give an outdoor pool, it looked obviously small. I mean, is it going to be usable or is it...
It'll probably be...
Or a toddler?
No, I, you know, I think he can answer that, but I think it'd be bigger than you think based on just how it looks. It may look small in there, but that's a huge building.
I realize that. I just was worried that maybe it would just be more children than adults.
The, the indoor competition pool would be 25 yards by 25 meters. So if you were to take that and go back to that picture, kind of get a picture, an idea of how big that is, it's, it's a pretty good size. And the outdoor pool, you know, mostly, mostly you use younger people out there anyway, so...
That's true. I mean, but younger people like teenagers, not children. They love the sun.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Those of us with the little kids that are out there, we have to be out there too.
With your grandkids.
I have two questions. One, that outdoor pool area, does it come with any other things with it, other like additional splash areas with it, or is it just the pool itself?
So the current plan for the outdoor pool is, is it's one body of water, but it'd have multiple amenities that would accommodate things such as a zero entry. The plan that we've been looking at and discussing actually includes the potential for a wave action pool within that one body of water as well, so that it could be actually, if you can envision this, that it would create waves that would actually come up on that zero beach entrance and that would go down into deeper water so that it would accommodate different age groups, and there'd be some type of play features for toddlers in there as well. So it, the goal is, is it isn't a small pool, but it is a single body of water that makes it challenging to accommodate a lot of people, so we're trying to have multiple flexibility with it so that it's exciting, whether we're talking about teenagers, we're talking about families, we're talking about seniors. It would try to accommodate all those needs.
My second question is, the rest of the area is being redone, but that is not going to be touched at this time, it's just being redone but left alone?
I'm assuming you're meaning the area that's on the west side of the...
I do, or the area on the other side where the splash park and the...
Yeah, around, around the splash park, there's 24 acres right now that's undeveloped. And the intent that the city has is that eventually to turn those into playfields like soccer, because as you know, we're gonna lose the soccer fields in about nine or 10 years. And so they want to try to turn those 24 acres into playfields.
But it's not being touched or just being redone at this time?
Well, they're not because we don't have the money.
It's already zoned the way it needs to be in order to be, have it be developed as
playfields.
Hey, any other questions for Jim before we make him get up and get up? No? Okay.
As soon as he sits down, we're gonna ask him that question, you know that. I'm, I'm gonna start. We might. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, the information we received tonight, I move that we, I move that the planning commission approve the West Jordan Recreation Aquatic Center preliminary site plan located at 5952 and 5950 West New Bingham Highway in a PF zoning with conditions one through four as listed in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Green and a second from Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any negative? Our motion passes, six to zero.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, the information received tonight, I move that the planning commission approve the West Jordan Recreation Center. This is the preliminary major subdivision for the property located at 5952 and 5950 West New Bingham Highway located in a PF zoning district with conditions one through three as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Commissioner Green has a motion and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any negative? Motion passes, six to zero.
And last but not least, I'm on a roll. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report on the evidence presented tonight, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the West Jordan Recreation Aquatic Center located at 5952 and 5950 West New Bingham Highway with a height of 48 feet and a, and the conditions one through four listed in the staff report.
Second.
Again, a motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negative? Motion passes, six to zero. Next item on our staff report is the 90th South Living Memory Care Future Land Use Map Amendment and Rezone. The applicant is listed as Mike Olson of the Antec Group. Is the applicant present? Sir, the time is now yours. You have 10 minutes. If you would please give us your proposal.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name's Mike Olson, and I'm with the Antec Group. This is a site on 90th South, just west of the canal. We sit on the east side of the emergency care facility there, you can see on the map. This site would have four buildings. Each of these buildings represent approximately 12,000 square feet. My guess would be that when the site is at full occupancy, we'd have two buildings as assisted living, one building memory care, and one building skilled nursing. The buildings are, would be single level except for the entryway where the kitchen and the dining rooms are. That portion of the building is a two-story facility with skylights. Our parking, we have about 64, I think, total parking, and I think we're about 50% open space. Finding a site like this that is adjacent to a city park where the residents could, you know, use the walking trails and also to end up with over two acres of open space on a site like this that the residents could get out and get some exercise outside is kind of a rare find. Wanted to make a note that our, we show that the parking lots are adjoining lease away. Spent some issues about whether or not that would be in access for the public, and our issue is we would gate that and it would be only used for emergency access. Any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Green?
So, the way I read the staff report, this, there'll be four 12,000 foot buildings. Each building will house approximately 24 residents to a potential of about 96. How many employees would work there on a regular basis coming in and out of there every day?
Two per building.
Okay. So we're not talking, so we're talking 10 full-time employees?
Yeah. You may have one or two more in the memory care facility, but I can't imagine that we would ever approach more than three employees per building or 12 employees total on site.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll save you some time after the talk.
Thank you.
Alright, this one is also Ms. Lawson's.
Thank you. So the proposal is located at 2585 West 90th South, and it is for amending the future land use map from professional office to high density residential and rezoning the 4.27 acres from rural residential half acre lots with F-size homes and residential estate half acre, half acre size lots with F-size homes to a R312, which is multi-family residential, 12 units per acre with a senior housing overlay district. The proposal that the applicant is looking at is for a convalescent care center and an assisted living facility. Under the current zoning district, the professional office, the assisted living facility is not permitted, which is why the applicant is requesting the future land use map amendment and the rezone. There were a couple of questions or discussions that staff had with the surrounding... Uh, there were a couple of questions, um, or discussions, uh, that staff had, uh, with the surrounding property owners to the south. Uh, one of the concerns that the property owners along Lisa Avenue had was the access to the south, um, which is showing that it is accessed, uh, from the south on the, uh, concept plan. And this concept plan is required whenever an applicant applies for a rezone. This access to the south, um, staff will require that a ga- a crash gate is, um, installed prior to development of the site. And this crash gate will only be open for emergency vehicles. Um, additionally, there'll be, um, also, because this is a more intense, uh, type of use being proposed than what's existing, uh, to the properties to the south, staff will also look more closely at, um, the separation between the uses, from the multi-family, uh, senior housing overlay district to the single-family residential to the south. Staff has found that the proposed, um, amendment to the future land use map and the rezone meet all of the criteria listed in, uh, city code. And staff is recommending that planning commission forward a positive recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Um, this is also listed as public hearing, so if anyone can we ask for some.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, yeah.
Questions for staff?
So, in a rezone like this, we're rezoning it to high-density residential, but because it's a con- convalescence-type uses that we're talking about, we really don't have a set unit per acre like a normal zoning would. Is that the way I see this?
That's correct. It would just be, um, a convalescent care facility and assisted living facility because they're not considered full units. A lot of these units will have, um, half kitchens or no kitchen at all. And they'll just be cafeteria types of, um, heating facilities.
So we real- so even though it's a high-density residential, we really can't say, other than the fact that we have twenty-two uni- twenty-two people per acre living here, we don't, we don't have any point of reference for, uh, any other type of density like the, the T S O D stuff or the things we have going on. We, we really, we're, we're really comparing apples and oranges there.
That's correct. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to limit, uh, the amount of, um, people that are using the facility. What they're limited by is landscaping and parking. If they're able to park it, um, then that's the number of, um, people that they would be able, or the square footage, um, that they would be able to use.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Back to the public hearing. If, uh, if anybody wants to speak on this item, please, uh, come forward, state your name. They'll have three minutes. Time is now yours.
I'm Ryan Rossonson. I live at twenty-five four-three west Alice Drive in the metal group, uh, Brown's Metal, uh, development there. I just had a couple of questions. Um, concerns for the city park, that city park in particular, and having people with memory care, is there gonna be an access that comes from that property directly right into, like a walking path that cuts into there? Um, and with that few staff members, I mean, we already have problems with elderly, elderly people in our neighborhood wandering the neighborhood and, you know. I, I am, I'm concerned for them and for their safety as well as the traffic on Ninetieth is horrible. So having a bunch of people going in and out all the time to that place, I don't know how they're gonna get in and out of there. I was wondering if it was maybe thought of to cut across through the I H C center right there or what, but that, that's gonna be a nightmare to get in and out of. A lot of accidents. We already have them all night long, so.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to address those? Anyone else?
My name is Clint Warby. I live at ninety-one twenty-one South Lisa Avenue. Uh, we've lived there since Brown, uh, Brown's Metal was developed, so that's over like thirty-eight years. We, uh, did have a concern about the access into the facility, but I think that's been addressed with the crash gate. Uh, we do have a concern as to whether or not, uh, this comes to be. And if it doesn't, uh, is there an option now to revert back to the existing zoning that's there now? Uh, that's one of our concerns. We don't want apartments built there. Uh, we also, I was thinking, uh, I think there needs to be some sort of a, a gate, uh, on the walking path. Excuse me. That would only allow the staff to allow people from the facility to go onto the walking path. Uh, there are lots and lots of activities taking place in that park. And, uh, they need to probably be chaperoned or escorted and things like that. So that would be a concern that we would have for their welfare. And also along the canal, there needs to be a fence, a high fence, uh, to protect the residents, uh, from, uh, getting into the canal. We've been lucky, uh, over the years, we've never had a fatality, uh, there, but who knows what might happen. And so the, the park is fenced. And I think with that, uh, development to north, that needs to be fenced as well. Um, I'm just wondering if it's going to be called the Ninetieth Assisted Living Center, meaning that you have to be ninety to get into it. I also thought that since I've lived there for such a long time and I love the place, that it's just a hop, skip and a jump to just go over and live there until I pass away.
It sounds like a good plan. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My name's Jill Morley and I live at twenty-six oh-two Meadow Ridge, also in the Brown's Metal subdivision. And, um, I, I like a couple of comments that have been made already about the traffic congestion on Ninetieth South. And I'm concerned that if we realize after this is all built and everything and that becomes a problem, if Lisa Avenue will then be the, the route to take in order to get into that complex. And I think that's one of the biggest fears of the people in our neighborhood. That we don't want more traffic congestion going through our streets, especially where there's a park and there's children playing. Um, my other thought was, um, is there a lockdown facility for these people with the memory care problems? We wanna make sure that no one's getting onto Ninetieth South and having issues that way, um, especially on the busy road. So that was all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Please come forward.
My name is John, John C. Judd. I live twenty-six oh-six Jody Street. Like Warby, I've been there since the time the subdivision started. And personally, I would welcome these people to come to our subdivision. And, uh, the only thing that I have a comment for is I've always been a person wanting more recreation. And I had my eyes on it for thinking that maybe it might be an extension to the park. Of course, I'm getting too old to use it, but I like to use it for my grandkids. Right now, um, they like to down to use the, the, the area. I've shot rockets off and flying kites and things like that down there. And it's a little bit small for that. I'd like to see the, the park get a little bit larger some way. But for a fenced in, but, but anyway, that's my comments on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gail Royal. I live at twenty-five seventy-six Jody Street. My house is on the corner of Jody and Lisa. I'm concerned also about the traffic. I hear the ambulances and fire engines going by constantly on Ninetieth. I do not want them coming down. Jody Warby, so. Um, I have, I don't want people in my backyard. So will there be a fence?
You asked that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Trevor Peters. I live at twenty-six twenty west Jody Street, just behind the, uh, proposed site. Um, I, many of the comments that I had for this evening have already been stated with the zoning. I'm extremely concerned about, about the high-density housing zoning change. Uh, I believe we have a lot of that in, in our area, very close as it is right now. Um, just north of Ninetieth, up at Twenty-seventh and Thirty-two hundred. Um, I don't necessarily oppose the facility. I don't think they would be bad neighbors, but I'm really concerned that if that project does not go through, what happens next? I mean, now we've opened the door and I'm not sure there's any guarantees. And I guess that's my question is, are there guarantees? Are there ways to say, we can approve this for this facility, but, you know, it's not approved for another form of high-density housing that is in there? Um, the road is another concern with both for myself, as, and my other neighbors and members of my community have mentioned. Uh, if I can add something in addition to that, one concern that we've had is we have a lot of problems with, with, uh, people come in and doing drug deals in the park. Um, a lot of mischief in that regard. Uh, we've voiced this to the city police department many, many times, um, and, and brought this issue up. And that's with the limited access that we have right now coming off of Twenty-seventh. If that potential to even have that road comes through, that's going to make that to be even a much bigger problem than we already have. And believe me, I watch this every, I mean, I see these deals going down multiple times a week. And I call and call and call and I, I sit there and watch it. I drive the road, I see them come down, I know exactly what's going on. And by the time the police department can get there, quite frankly, they're gone. These deals go down in less than a minute and they're gone. And if we open up, if, if that road is allowed, that proposed road is there to come into our community, not only is there going to increase tremendous traffic, which, to be honest with you, is a big problem right now. If you look at what happens in our area, um, we have a lot of soccer teams and people using the park, which, don't get me wrong, is wonderful. That's what the city parks are for, is for everybody to use. However, we have people speeding down our road and we have young children living on that road. And, you know, when you mix that in with that, that open potential, I can see that also being in addition to increasing the drug problem. I can see it being a shortcut around with a traffic light and everything that's right there. And that would be an absolute disaster. That would just bring so much traffic through our neighborhood and bring a tremendous amount of problems and safety risks to, to the young children that live in our community. And, which is something that's going to increase too. Um, you know, we have a lot of, uh, members of our community that are older, that've lived there for a lot of years, but those homes are selling and younger families are buying them and moving in. And that will bring not only a problems with their safety, but the drug problem increases it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry. My, Jill Morley, twenty-six oh-two Meadow Ridge. Um, I am just, uh, when he was talking, I was just thinking, um, that the park actually could use a little bit of upkeep if you were gonna have elderly people walking in there. There's a little path that goes all the way around and I don't even know what it is. It's, but some kind of a water fixture pipe thing or whatever, but there's a big spray painted red, um, on the sidewalk that just says, hey, watch out. But, you know, someone who's elderly is gonna trip over that and fall. I wish it would be taken care of just for our community anyway, but something to think about. The other question that I have, is there really a need for a, uh, memory care facility? There is one not very far from us. I believe it's Ninety-eighth and almost Redwood Road, somewhere over there. So I'm not sure if there, is there a need, is there a demand? Um, those are my only two other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for coming out and voicing your concerns and letting us know your opinions. It's important to, to us when we make our decisions to, to know your mind, so thank you. All right, uh, we'll close the public comment session and, uh, bring it back to the commission. We've got lots of things to address from this. Commissioner Green?
So, uh, just, just so we can address a couple of the, the neighbors' concerns, uh, we're only dealing with the rezone tonight. Anything that would, that would cause fences to go along canals, um, ingress, ingress along Ninetieth South, that'll all be part of the preliminary site approval process, correct?
Correct. You know, th- this is, uh, something that, that's I'm sure very foreign to a lot of the, the neighbors. And so if, if I may, I'll, I'll go through the process. Uh, this is the initial meeting and, uh, from here, uh, depending on whether the police, uh, commission does a positive recommend, or a positive or negative recommendation, that will go to, to the city council for decision. Uh, that's just regarding the land use and, and zoning. Um, the details, the site details, uh, fencing and so forth that Commissioner Green brought up, that will come, uh, during the next round of public hearings, uh, where, because they're asking for a senior housing, uh, overlay, they're required to not only do a regular site plan, but a full, uh, development plan, preliminary development plan. And so that, that vehicle allows, the commission allows the council to listen to the, all the, the residents' comments and, and, uh, make changes based on, on the, you know, mitigating those concerns. And so if the council does approve the land use map amendment and rezone, the applicant will then file for a preliminary development plan and site plan with all the details regarding access, uh, landscaping, fencing. Uh, all of those things will come and, uh, the same notifications that were made, uh, for this hearing tonight will, will be, uh, sent out again. And so there will be, uh, multiple public hearings from here moving forward. So we don't have a lot of details other than this, you know, concept plan, which the code does require. But at, at least it, it's a, it's a catalyst to, to get the discussion going, to hear the residents' concerns, so we can address that during the next round if, if the council decides to rezone the property.
So direct, to address the other question, if for some reason, uh, this particular developer, we approve the rezoning to the high residential in, in a senior housing overlay and this project falls through, the, the zoning would still stay high residential, senior housing? And any project that would be put on there would be limited to the num- to, to whatever? What, what's the number of, on a high, high, uh, is it twenty-something units? It's probably twenty-something units to an acre, if I, if I remember my basic West Jordan code.
The rezone request is for an R-three-twelve, which is twelve units per acre.
So that, so, so even, so that even though, so this is twelve units an acre, so the ma- the maximum number of units that we would put in here would be roughly fifty units? Plus whatever the number is based on an R-twelve?
That's, that's right. Um, if, if they decide not to, um, go with the convalescent care facility or the assisted, uh, living facility and they're just going on a plus fifty-five, um, community, then it would be based on, uh, the ultimate square acre.
Right. So, uh, as you, as the question is aware, and I'm sure that most of the residents are not aware, uh, there is a city code, a city ordinance that, that prohibits, uh, or, or, I'm sorry, regulates, uh, multi-family residential. And, uh, the only way that they can, can move forward with this project is if it is a senior development. Um, uh, there are a few other exceptions, but, uh, that there are a lot of safeguards and you're not going to get a standard four-rent, uh, apartment complex coming in here. Uh, the, the code simply does not allow for that right now. So, um, there, there's a lot of, uh, opportunity for public comment and, um, even though that this forum, forum here today doesn't facilitate a lot of fluid dialogue, um, if any of the, the residents want to talk with, with me or any of the other staff members, uh, either after the meeting or at another time that's more convenient, we're, we're always available. And we can go through all of the code if, if you want to go through, through the code.
One other caveat that too is that, um, as was asked, if, if the code is changed, can't be changed back. And the answer to that is if another applicant were to come to the city and want to request a zoning change in the future, if this were not to happen, and want some other project to come through, they would have to come through the same process that this one did. And it can be changed to another zoning if, if that, if this is the case, so. And it can be changed to another zoning if, if that, if this is the case. All right?
I'm going to make just a couple of comments here. We are, we are looking at a rezone from a, basically a PO, from the professional office zone to a high-density. So if this were, if we did not approve this, it would, the likelihood is if it remained a professional office, is that we would have office buildings in this particular area. From my perspective, given the nature that this is probably going to be more senior housing, I think that what we would see in this particular nature, also based on the testimony, I think we're going to see actually less traffic than if we saw four acres of professional office. If we saw a professional office with what you see, even if you assume that IHC to the west is something similar, I've been to that IHC, and it's awfully busy, you know, during, during a lot of times. So it, I, I think you're going to see more, I mean, I don't know how many parking spots we're talking about on the, on the, on the site plan, and we'll see that in the future. But given the fact that we're only talking about twelve or fifteen full-time employees, I think the traffic's prob, and plus the residents, but most of these residents probably aren't going to drive. At least I, at least I hope most of them aren't going to drive. Never mind. I'm going to assume that we're actually going to see less traffic than if we made this a typical PO-type development that could have two to four store, I think we can go almost four stories in a PO, if, if whatever the height limit is in a professional office. I, I think we're probably talking about, at least from my perspective, I think we're talking about less traffic. And so what I'm hoping is, is that the neighbors understand that as we make this decision, we understand the traffic issue. What we're, what we're also taking into consideration is if it remained the same, your traffic might be worse. And so from my perspective, I think, given ninety-six resident, potential of a maximum of ninety-six residents and twelve, fifteen employees on a given time period, I think that's probably a less intense use than what we could have if we had four acres of office buildings that were located here. We see what we've seen down in a couple of other places, particularly in the, you know, the east side of the river in Midvale, where they've put some other PO-type stuff in there and built some pretty substantial office complexes. So that, that would be my comment on this at this point in time.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. My only concern about this is, and this may be something that isn't for tonight's meeting, but when we actually look at the, the site plan, is I don't live too far from the Beehive House. And it isn't a memory place. It's just for people who are, well, but they're elderly. And many times, they're out walking by themselves and they're lost. And I've walked them back, I don't know how many times, because they don't know where they're at. So that is my only concern with this, is that there be enough people working there that this does not happen, and the memory park be a lockdown facility, because they will be lost if they are able to leave. So that is my only concern with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report on the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the general, to approve the general plan, land use map amendment located at Twenty-Five Eighty-Five West, Ninety South, from professional office to high-density residential.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Quinn and a second from Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissent to the motion? Motion passes six to zero.
Can I make one more comment just to the applicant? As you're looking at your preliminary site plan and you're working with staff, I would recommend that you take the minutes from tonight and all the neighbors' concerns and incorporate those into the preliminary site plan and work those out in the development plan and the site plan, so that when the site plan becomes back before the commission and the city council, that all those issues are worked out with the neighbors instead of having the, the public hearing be a hostile-type thing where, where you end up if you have to get, you know, if you got chased out and had to do it again. Those don't become very, those don't come, those aren't very pleasant meetings. So that would be my, that would be my advice to you.
And again, you will be getting notified again when the next public hearing is, so please come back and give your opinions at that point. All right.
I have one more motion for the rezon.
Yeah.
Yeah, just waiting for the right moment here. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move to the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council to rezon the property located at Twenty-Five Eighty-Five West, Ninety South, from RR Point Five F, Rural Residential Half-Acre Lots with F-size homes, and RU Point Five F, Residential Estate Half-Acre Lots with F-size homes, zones to the R three twelve Multifamily Residential Twelve Units Per Acre zoning district with a senior housing overlay.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion of the motion?
I'm just going to make one comment here, and I want to make so that we're on the record. I think that from my perspective, I don't think that we'd ever see half-acre lots on this partic, you know, in this particular piece of property on Ninety South. So the zoning's going to end up being something different, general land use map PO or something here. So the rezon, to me, makes sense. I, I don't think that we would ever see residential houses on this particular piece of property and, and, and that particularly half-acre lots right there on Ninety. I just don't see that occurring, so that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Okay. All right, any other discussion of motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissenting votes? Motion passes six to zero. And the final item on our, on our public hearing tonight is the Crossing at Campus View General Plan Land Use Map Amendment, Resilient Map Amendment. The applicant is Jeffrey Burnson with Tricard Building is the applicant target. Time is now yours. Please limit your comments to ten minutes.
Thank you, appreciate it. And Jeff Burnson. We've got a project here that we're looking at on the corner of Seventy-Eight Hundred South or Eight Hundred West, southwest corner, involves three residential lots that we would be combining to create a one-point-nine-three-acre development. Our intent, obviously, is to change the future land use from its existing PO-DC zone to an SC-one zone to accommodate, accommodate our ability to develop that in the neighborhood retail capacity as opposed to a professional office. In taking a look at this project, we have, looking at our zone change here, looking at the current maps, you can see, which you have access to, with the PO-DC zone and with our border. I'll go here to the, to the benefits. This was actually prepared, it's pretty detailed. I'm not going to go through every line item. This was done with a town hall meeting we had with the residents in the area, so that we could go through each item and spend a significant amount of time. Wonderful residents, great people in the area, and they certainly have valid concerns and issues that hopefully we've dealt with them the best we can at this point, but would certainly continue to, to work with the community to do whatever we needed to do to make this work out in the area. The other thing, I just put this together here, that I was just going through the existing zones, et cetera. Proposed project types we have, we have either a single-tenant retail building that we would put on the project, and we'll have two separate retail buildings. Multitenant with fast food. In talking with the neighbors, a couple of our prospective retail prospects for a single-tenant user were in the CVS, Walgreens scenario. That did not sit well, so I have committed to them, we aren't going to be doing a single-tenant retail building at all on that property. So it would be basically a multi-tenant with fast food options in there, or sit-down restaurant. Currently, this is the current status of the corner. You may be familiar with it, maybe not, but the corner has, I think, safety issues concerning with it the way it is currently, and hopefully with what we would propose to do, that would kind of help alleviate some of the issues that you currently see with, with, you know, bringing up the kind of the...
It feels like our beautiful fence.
It's gorgeous. It's gorgeous. This is kind of the aerial view looking down on that property. You can see, you can see that, the office building to the west, and of course, the housing to the south, and then the four plexes that are across the street from this property currently. That's just kind of a little rendering of what maybe a two-building project would look like on that corner as opposed to what it does now. This, in line with our meeting with the planning department already, very, very familiar with the fact that the sidewalk actually will probably take, it's got to be moved off, so we'll actually have a park strip between Seventy-Eight Hundred South and the sidewalk. So that perspective was done by, by my graphics guy who just put this together quickly, but obviously that'll change. This is just a concept. Our other, you can notice the road there to the right, which is to the west of the property, that is actually covering the canal. We've met with the canal company, working with Salt Lake County right now on a permit that would give us the opportunity to cover that canal and make it actually another right-in, right-out access for the property, which would give it some good circular flow and hopefully take some of the traffic off Thirty-Eight Hundred West for those people who are going to continue east. And I think that would definitely serve that purpose. That was a single-tenant. That's actually a CVS right there, but that's not what we're going to do. So basically, that's, in a nutshell, what we have here. So do you have any questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
I just have one. Can you just commit to not doing a fast-food chicken place there?
I did not commit to that. I just did a single-user building, CVS, Walgreens. Look at me, would I, would I ever not do a fast food?
Fast food's fine, just move out of the fast-food chicken in Jordan Landing already.
I don't think it'll be a fast-food chicken. If it is a fast food, it may not even be.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So the land is currently zone residential, but the future land use map shows it's PO or is it zone PO?
It's zone PO.
It's zone PO.
Okay. So how do we end, this isn't, I'll ask this one in a second to Mr. Gardner, never mind. I guess my question to you is, what, since that street, since Thirty-Eight Hundred West is mainly a residential street, why put commercial or the SC commercial really at the end, really what's on a residential street?
Because it's a corner of one of the busiest intersections in West Jordan.
Okay.
I mean, it makes sense. I think too, in consideration, which we've looked at, talked to a traffic engineer who will be completing our traffic study, depending on what we find out here tonight, has basically said that it should alleviate traffic going into the subdivision that they have now. They have a lot of problems on that road. It's narrow, it, a lot of people go zooming through that intersection and go into the subdivision. And I have been told through our town hall meeting, of left transmissions and different parts of your car at that dip. So I think this will hopefully help to slow that down, give them someplace else they can turn before they start heading down a dead-end street, because that's in essence what they find out when they get through the dip. And I, I think this is something that's really important to the citizens there because there are safety issues dealing with that, with their kids that are playing, you know, walking down through the sidewalks into that subdivision that has no out other than this.
All right. Another question. Save you some time at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and this one is Mr. Bergers.
Mr. Burnson covered, you know, the basic premise of where the location is and what he wants to do. This property was changed to PO a few years back when I think an office project was proposed, but that never came to pass. But a couple of things I want to mention, the use table in the SC-one or the neighborhood commercial zone and the professional office zone are really similar. I mean, there's not a large difference really in the types of uses that would go in there. One of the differences is, is in the PO zone, and I think Commissioner Green hit on this in the last hearing, is that there is a, there could be a significant height difference in the PO zone as opposed to the SC-one. The SC-one's limited to thirty-five feet with no, no chance to even go higher than thirty-five feet. In the PO zone, it's a maximum of forty feet, but they can get a conditional use to, to go taller, whatever the planning commission at that time is composed of feels like is appropriate. And so that's a couple of, you know, I think really the two zones are not different enough that it's going to make an impact in the neighborhood, in my opinion. Thirty-Eight Hundred West, regardless of what goes in there, whether office or commercial is going to have to be widened, that's just a simple fact of the matter. Seventy-Eight Hundred South will be required, improvements will be required to be put in along that street, no matter what goes in. And a road plus with, you know, it'd be a future site plan, wouldn't be putting a road over the top of, of that canal. That would be a plus in alleviating a lot of the traffic, you know, to Thirty-Eight Hundred West through this project. And the other thing is, is regardless whether it's office or commercial, it will be, it will have to meet our buffering standards for the homes to the south and the east. And so there will be a landscape buffer and a building setback for those. And so either, either type of use. And so the zones are really similar, but it just allows a little more of a commercial use rather than strictly office. Staff feels like it meets all of the criteria and findings that are contained in the ordinance and recommends approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis.
So I didn't miss this, but if you talk about widening that intersection, is it, is there a sign width already that how wide it's to be, or is that all pending the traffic study that is to be completed?
I think that our traffic engineer, and make correct me if I'm wrong, he already has somewhat of a detail of what the collector portion of that needs to be.
But imagine it's not going to be as wide as the office side up here.
But what it will add is a turn lane and right turn lane, so people are not congested at that intersection.
I couldn't speak to exactly what the traffic engineer has in mind, and there will be a traffic study, but he sees this as an opportunity to do some improvements to that in there, correct?
Commissioner Green.
So that was my question, is we, as we look at this intersection at Thirty-Eighth West, and you go to the north where that comes out of Jordan Landing, it's got that, I'm going to say it out loud, that stupid divider lane, forcing-left nonsensical stuff. If we redo this intersection with this project, are we going to take a look at that so we can fix that intersection and make it work with, in concert with this, with this project?
It'll probably look at, but I don't know that it would go away. It, it actually has a purpose, that nonsensical curve that catches you. If you're not prepared, you get stuck and you get, you get trapped into a right turn. But it does prevent a weaving motion of traffic that's coming out of that trap, that shopping center, and actually creates a better flow of traffic through that intersection. But it is something...
Okay, if you say so.
Unless you drive a Jeep. If you drive a Jeep, then...
It doesn't matter. I just, it's just weird the way that works, and sometimes you see a lot of weird stuff happen with that, that concrete barrier, that's why... stuff happen with that, that concrete barrier, that's why.
I, I think that's fair to take a look at that, and we'll, we'll discuss it.
All right, and I appreciate your answer.
Thank you. Is this going to be a right-in and right-out only?
A lot of that, well, I imagine, but a lot of that will be, come with the traffic study, you know, how this is going to be approached. I don't, well, I think that the intersection will be, of course, you know, signaled so that we'll make a turn with the...
We have a signal there, will we have one that goes down the street for you?
Are you talking about the section that's going to be covering the canal?
No, I'm talking about as they come out of 3800.
There's already a signal.
Okay, go. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for staff? All right, well, again, this is listed as a public hearing, so we will open the public comment time. I have two people that would like to make comments, John Shepherd and Rick Perkins. If we could go in that order, and then if anyone else would like to speak after that, please feel free to come up to the microphone. Please state your name and address before you speak, and you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is John Shepherd. I live at 78, 78 South, 3800 West. When I listen to some of this commentary, it's not surprising, I understood that this, a lot of these point areas were done between the city of West Jordan and this developer before we even knew it was a project. The people, there are some legitimate, the three houses that are there, they all have problems, they all want to sell. But what we feel is, there's, the way it is and the way it's going to be built, some of the things that Mr. Bernson has brought out is strictly hypothetical. Every one of them can be argued. I think the reason the city likes this so well is because it's a, it's a win for Mr. Bernson, because he can put two businesses in there that are duplicated 50 times over across the street in Jordan Abortion, I mean, Jordan Landing. Anybody can just walk across the street and get all this stuff. I agree with Mr. Hash here, why would you want to put those buildings there? There's only one reason, the city of West Jordan gets the benefit of having this work done. If they all rezone it, the developer will take care of some of it. The man that's most directly confronted by the thing is, is my neighbor, and we particularly don't want the canal rezoned, or the canal, the canal can be covered over, but as far as a trail, he's got horses out there that are bothering, from people going up and down the canal. I stop kids all the time from chucking rocks at his horses. I can't keep within 50 or 75 feet of that canal road, I can't keep a piece of glass in any kind of a vehicle. And so, we don't get any protection or any help from the police for us, as far as that. I did see a policeman had someone pulled over at the end of our street the other day, and was writing a ticket, I was surprised. And it is a bad intersection as far as people happen to walk up and down that, but half the sidewalk, which would be helped a little bit, but half the sidewalks in West Jordan has the same problem. I think it's because people, because when these roads are reworked, if they take that intermediate strip out and move the sidewalk over three feet, they gained another eight feet, and so they've got another lane, and that's the way it's been developed. I mean, the intersection right here at Redwood Road and 78 is the same thing. It's the same intersection, it's just coming around a corner, and you've got traffic right against, I mean, you've got pedestrians right against traffic. As far as I'm concerned, I've been there for 38 years, West Jordan has that, a lot of that regional occupants are still there, the regional builders. West Jordan has that, whole area is slated for high density, 16 units, so, and encroachment and the way they pushed for 40 years has been no different. I don't see that what's there was brought in the same way it is now three or four years ago, I can't remember. So, well, fine, we'll, we'll put in a professional building and we'll let it ride. And now, there's not enough money in that, so we've got to go to something else, and we feel that is devaluing our, our properties, and as far as I'm concerned, that's about where I stand on it. I have no use for what has been, especially anything, especially anything will be accomplished by rezoning.
All right. Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Perkins.
My, my name is Rick Perkins. I live at 7864 South, 3800 West. If you look on there, that fence they're going to put up is going to be right, I'm going to be the right next house. And I, I understand they're putting up a buffer zone and, and stuff like that. You know, some of my concerns are, in our last meet, one meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, I may be wrong, if this is rezoned, all our properties on 38 there are considered horse property, and we all have water rights on it. I don't know if I'm wrong on this, but if I ever go to sell my home after that's rezoned, I could no longer sell that as horse property. So that just devalued my property. So, but, you know, no matter how you look at it. So, so that's one concern. The, the buildings I want to put over there, yeah, you know, I understand where, you know, they, they bypass going with some CBCs and Walgreens and that, that, I, I was really against it, that 24 hours business being there. I mean, I, I live right there. And one other thing too, I, I guess I'm, John and I, and maybe the other neighbor next to me, was the only one that got one of these letters, because at our other meetings, we had a lot more people here, and when I talked to them, neither one of them got a letter to be at this meeting. So, I guess I'm speaking, John and I are speaking for everybody, but at, at our other meetings, that was, that was a major concern of our property being devalued like that. Traffic is horrible on that road. That intersection is a horrible intersection. Just as you go to pull out and turn right, there's people making a U-turn. If you're not looking, you're into them. So that, I understand that, I understand that that needs to be, that that needs to be done. Another thing, if this does go through, and you do decide to rezone this, I think as a community, need to, need to have some say in a few things that happen on that road. And I'm talking, because we, we have people come out of Jordan Landing, and they don't realize that, that it's a dead-end road, it just goes down in a circle and that's it. Yeah, and they, and that's why they get so many people turning around, they're funny to realize. I, I think we need some major signs out there, we need some speed bumps, people just rip up and down that road. And, and we have, we have a lot of kids on that road too, and, and so. Another concern was that we have the canal bank, and my understanding is that at some point, that it's, it's not designated as a trail yet, but they're looking at it. We really don't want a trail there. You know, a lot of us don't, we, we just get so many different kind of people walking around back there and throwing rocks at our houses, and, you know, it's just so, if they're going to block it off, block it off. Just keep it open for the canal maintenance. We, we just, we don't need a trail there. You know, my, my other concerns are, you know, if they put a building there, a little store or something, I look, I go across Jordan Landing, we have a bunch of vacant buildings over there already. Myself personally, if I'm going to go shop, I'm going to go in where all the, where all the stores are, that's where I'm going to go. I just can't see where a store can thrive right there, you know, unless it is a, a major fast-food joint that everybody just loves, and that's where they're going to go. But where that, where you come in off 78, you come right around, you come right off into 38, and that was my concern too, was coming out on 38, there is there enough distance from where you come out to where you hit that intersection? Is that going to be just congested? Everybody in my neighborhood is just going to, everybody in our neighborhood is just, is just really concerned about this, this traffic situation, the devaluation of our properties because of that. So, I mean, like I say, correct me if I'm wrong on that bit, if it's rezone, we can no longer sell our, we, we can keep our animals as long as we have them. I have a couple of horses on mine, and, you know, I, and is that going to be a, a concern too with what's going over there? Are they going to start contacting new people and saying, hey, this guy over here, you know, da-da-da? And, you know, I've been there 17 years, and, and that's why I bought that property. So I appreciate listening to our, our opinions on this, and, and thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'm David McComey, I live at 7947 South, 3800 West, and I've been in my house for 40 years, I'm the original owner. One of the reasons that we bought where we did was because we had irrigation, we could have our animals, we could have whatever. And after I moved in, those four plexes got built. I was told, all these lands, I have almost three-quarters of an acre, and I was told they were all going to be similar to the rest of the houses on 38. So if I get a little nervous about these meetings, you can understand why. If this zoning does go through, see the cricket lines on the crosswalks? Okay, that intersection is already a huge mess, and it has not been brought up here yet. Everybody from 3800 to Bangater, south to 8030, if they want to go across the street or turn west, they must come to 3800. The other two exits have been blocked when they built the overpass. Another issue, like I have a 33-foot trailer, and I have to pull it through Jordan Landing so I can visually look at the intersection at 3800 to see if I can go in. Because if somebody's parked on that west side, and people are trying to turn west, there's no space. And it's stupid, I mean, I can be coming up from, you know, Southern Utah, and I go all the way to 70 if I drive through Jordan Landing, just so I can visually see that intersection. I liked the comments about the medium, they didn't bring it all the way up, it stops that. One of our problems is you go to turn right, and people flip U-turns in front of you without even coming into the intersection. I'm sure the curtain's back so that semi's coming out of Jordan Landing can make that corner, but they need to either put a no-U-turn sign, or enforce people flipping U-turns without approaching the intersection. I have great concerns that as this, if this is developed, that, you know, what it's going to end up with, because when that condominium one right there on the corner was built, they bought a little bit of the land in front of those first two houses, I'm assuming they bought it.
John, did they throw you for that?
I don't know if they did.
Oh, okay. But they made it wider, but only by a few feet, very few feet, maybe four feet. And so it made it to where it's really, you know, very narrow, three lanes right there in order to get out. And if it backed up very far, so I would want to make sure that if they do develop that, that they come in, all three properties widen that road substantially. In our earlier meetings, they talked about 12 additional feet width on that, and I'd want to make sure that does happen.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? If we could please try to keep our comments to three minutes? I'm sensitive to this, because I know that you guys have things to say, and it's important for us to hear it, but we also have a timeframe that we try to stay within, so if you could consolidate at all, I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Mary McGrisham, my name, nickname's Joyce. I live in 7850 South, 3800 West, and I'm one of the homeowners that is interested in having my home developed through Mr. Berns, Bernson. 10 years ago, well, first of all, I've been in the neighborhood for 34 years, but in, but then we moved to the other part of the neighborhood where we're living now, and we've lived there for 22 years. And there used to be a cornfield across where the Jordan Landing is, and that was wonderful, but then, when the Jordan Landing was built, then we got all the runoff traffic, it seemed, from Walmart into our sub, into our street, and always turning around in the 30, especially the three driveways of the homeowners, which were, which is being affected. So, we saw professional offices also go behind us directly, and my backyard is directly connecting to the parking lot of the professional offices, so it just makes sense that all three homes combined together. And then there was professional offices zoned on the other side, and of course, Jordan Landing on the opposite side, so we were being surrounded, so we thought, well, why not join them? So that's why 10 years ago, we, as a group, the three homeowners came to the city and got professional offices, and it got approved. But of course, the development didn't work well, so we just stayed put, thinking it would become a chance to be developed sometime. So when the developer came, we just jumped at the chance, because there's been so much trouble with the traffic and crime, and even, even gunfire right there near the intersection, and this is just recently. The policemen know us, or know our neighborhood very well, and I just wanted a chance to be able to move on, move on. And I feel like it's a better way to, I mean, I don't believe it's safe to even be in the driveway, because I, even myself and my daughter almost got run over, people turning around in our driveway. And our mailbox has been hit many times, we finally had to cement, cement it really, really deep, we've replaced it so many times, and even just this, this month, this weed limit sign was toppled over, and I had to call the city, and they had to replace it. But there's definitely a need for some change, and so I support the zone change.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jackie McGrisham. I live at 7850 South, 3800 West also, that's my mother. And I also support the rezoning that Jeffrey has presented. I've lived there my whole life, the 22 years I moved there when I was a baby, and I've seen how also the, the traffic has gotten worse. And we all know that there needs to be some changes, and I just really liked the positive things that could come from rezoning, like the right-hand turn in and right-hand out. There's probably over 100 cars that turn around just in front of our driveway or in our driveway, and I was the daughter that she was talking about has almost gotten hit. I've even seen like tire tracks across our whole front lawn and people turning around. So it's not safe for residential zoning right there. Yeah, like my mom's, my mother has mentioned, there's lots of crime too, it would just give more lighting, and it'd given a more appealing, it's like a more appealing look to the neighborhood, because right now, the, the outside look doesn't look very good. It could give profit to the city. I think it could prosper there, just because of the location. We're, we've already talked about how it's one of the busiest intersections in West Jordan. No matter what, people are going to be turning around, I might as well give them somewhere to go. And I think that's all I have to say, I just see the benefits of it. of it, especially since we're affected mostly by the traffic, even more than the people down the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dwayne Alder. I live on Seventy-Nine Forty South Thirty-eight Hundred West. I'm not really sure exactly which way I feel, for or against it, because both, there is both pros and cons. I do feel, though, this will bring in more drift draft from the outside neighborhood with, with the stores being there. I've already been broken into twice, three times. So, I'm afraid of that. It's going to happen more. But I'm also afraid of the intersection is now, of my two young drivers. I'm terrified. I don't drive very often, because I do see accidents there quite often. So, I'm in both directions, but I do, I am concerned about the traffic. I am concerned about the crime going on.
Thank you.
Are you doing Morse code over there, Julie?
Hey, I haven't hit it up in six, and I'm not saying anything.
Okay. Any other public comments? Thank you again for all of your comments coming out to discuss this. One question, Scott, for you. Oh, I need to close the public comment, so. Public comment is closed. Scott, there was a comment made about devaluation of property. Now, the envelope that we're looking at is the only section that would be rezoned. Am I correct in that?
Yes, Mr. Perkins' property is not up for rezon. It's a zone, rural residential half-acre. He could maintain his horse property.
So, his value will not?
It won't change, no.
Okay.
It might go up, and then he's going to hate his tax bill.
All right, Commissioner Hanson.
You, you saw my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But he could still sell his house, and it wouldn't be legal non-conforming, because he's not being.
No, it's not non-conforming. The zoning on his property is not changing. None of the water rights are changing, nothing. There's nothing, his property won't be affected at all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
There's a couple of things that I know that the residents talked about that I want to, I want to address. I think you addressed one, and that's the, we're only, we're not, we're not rezoning anything more than the three parcels that are the first three in from the, from Seventy-Eight Hundred South. And those are already currently zoned as the, the office zoning, the PO zone. So, we're not talking about rezoning the rest of the street, although I'd love to rezone those four boxes across the street and tear them down. I didn't say that, so we can get a good intersection. Okay. But the fact of the matter is, this property's already rezoned for a PO. So, we could put office complex in, and as Mr. Gardner points out, we could go with higher buildings and probably even a higher density use than what we're talking about in the SC zone. To address the high-density issue, as I notice on the general land use plan, it was designated, some of this area is designated as long-term, as high-density. But as Mr. Langford mentioned earlier in a previous part of this, because the city council's put the cap and grade ordinance, and we abide by that, high-density housing in this area is going to be virtually impossible. Because, because we're limited, we have to build, what is it, two hundred? We have to build three hundred houses a year for the next thirty years to catch up with the high-density or something like that, based on the report that we had last, last commission meeting. So, this particular, I don't think we're going to have to worry about the high-density and, and the property values changing. What I do want to interject is that we get saddled with the wonderful opportunity sometimes of balancing land ownership rights. We've heard from the owner that says, I want off this street, sell my house and turn it into a restaurant. We've heard other, other people say, I don't want anything on my street. I think eventually that land, that land's going to be developed, no matter whether it's, whether it's an office, whether it's the office complex there, or whether it's, Mr., at least it's not storage units. I can't just say that. I had to get that at some point tonight. Sorry. But we have to balance the property owners' rights that own the property with the one, with the other people that live on the street. And it makes it very difficult, because we understand the traffic. I hate that intersection. I drive through there all the time, and half the time now, I'm going out at Seventy South to avoid that tra, that intersection anyway. So, I understand the concern about the traffic. I understand that it's very difficult to have a development like that, you know, any development in your neighborhood when you're used to a, to an RR zone for the last thirty-five years. And we, unfortunately, we get stuck with trying to balance all the property owners' rights. And sometimes it works, and sometimes it makes people mad. And so, we hope you understand that whatever decision we make tonight, that it, it's a difficult decision to balance the needs of every property owner in a particular area, because it's just not, it's just not easy. And I'm going to end there for now and see if there's anything else that...
Well, I'll just add to that. In the, you know, I think it's important also to recognize that it's rare for a developer to come in and talk to people in the community before they even come to us. That's, that's not a typical process. And where, with this property, there's an opportunity to fix that intersection that everyone hates so much, and still provide a buffer zone off of Seventy-Eight Hundred South. There are, there, I'm seeing that there are problems that have been listed by the pros and problems that have been listed by the cons, that are all solved by this development, as it's been put forth to us. And it's important to remember, too, that what we're, what we're passing tonight is just the rezon. We're not, we're not doing a preliminary site plan. Am I correct in that? It's just the rezon. So, this is all going to come back in front of us again when it comes down to what's going in, to how it's going in, what it's going to look like, and what's going to go there. So, so whether it's a PO zone or an SC-1 zone, it's like Mr. Gardner said, it's a very similar zoning. It's not going to change any of your property values. Yeah, that's my comment.
You know, I did have one more question. As we talk about, and this is just maybe off the wall, but it would be the first time I've been accused of that. But when we, if we're talking about a piece of property like this that might have restaurants on it, and we talk about the buffering, do we have the ability to, in the, in the site development plan, shape that so that things like the grease and things that come from restaurants and smells and those kind of things, do we have the opportunity to buffer those, to help the neigh, to protect the neighborhood from those as well?
Through the conditional use process.
Okay.
If it's a detrimental impact, you can mitigate it.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'm ready to make a remark. I don't have anyone else.
That's good.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations we see today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from professional office to neighborhood commercial, and rezon one point nine three acres from professional office zone to the SC dash one neighborhood shopping center zone. The property located at Seventy-Nine Twenty-four to Seventy-Nine Fifty South Thirty-eight Hundred West.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hanson and a second from Commissioner Queen. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissenting votes? Motion is passed six to zero.
Do you have a zoning amendment? Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations we see today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezon the property located at Seventy-Nine Twenty-four to Seventy-Nine Fifty South Thirty-eight Hundred West from PO professional office zone to SC dash one neighborhood shopping center town.
Second.
Again, a motion from Commissioner Hanson, second from Commissioner Queen. Any discussions of the motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any dissenting votes? Motion passes six to zero.
I recommend that we...
Say, motion through, sir.
Real quick. So, I'll just take a couple of minutes. The council retreat, it was last Friday.
Last Friday?
And I lose track of time. One of the things they brought up for retreat was that they wanted to do a planning commission city council workshop. One of the, we're just trying to narrow down our options as far as scheduling goes. One of the options that the council threw out was to do it on the first month that we have five Wednesdays, which is March, March twenty-ninth. I don't know if Wednesdays work for you. No, no?
March twenty-ninth, we're on the schedule or something.
Wednesday's not at all, I can't. Okay. I may, just because it's kind of like hurrying paths with your schedules, council's schedules, we may just send out the, kind of like a doodle poll or whatever, to just get our options narrowed down. But just be aware that you'll be getting a request for our scheduling. But one of the reasons why they wanted to have a workshop with all of you is just to, well, for a lot of reasons, but one of the reasons brought up was that there've been a couple of decisions that have gone before you, and then to the council, and they've, they've gone opposite the planning commission. So, they wanted just to have a general open discussion and explain why they voted the way they voted, and you'll have the opportunity.
What if, what if we did a five Tuesday month?
We could throw that out, too.
I'm, I'm open. I would love to meet with the city council.
Oh, yeah, I would love to, that's why.
But overall, hearing Wednesday evenings are not...
I'm pretty flexible.
Wednesday nights are okay, but March twenty-ninth, I'll be in Tennessee, so.
Okay.
We're coming back.
I'll make, I'll make arrangements to be here if we could do it on that day. The meeting will be a lot smoother.
I'd represent that, all right.
So, what Wednesday are we looking at? Well, the council threw out the twenty-ninth, but if we can't get a majority of the planning commission, we'll have to look at another date. Ultimately, though...
Yeah, it wouldn't be till May.
It won't be till May, yeah. And I don't know, I'm not sure if the council is available on Tuesday nights, so.
Even if we have another night, you know, just, I...
Just, just send out a couple of dates.
Maybe three days.
I can find the maybe's in a bunch, too.
Yeah, right, Monday. All right. Meeting adjourned.